Council meeting to order. First, we will start with the pleasurable evening.
Let's do it. The United States of America and the people of our nation, where my nation is under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as strong.
Okay, we're going to move on to presentations and recognition. We're going to do a quick shift. We're going to start out with Russ Nelson, Fire Chief, East Farms Volunteer Fire Department. Well, I'm no starting being a fireman at the age of two, from what I can tell.
Yeah, come on up, I would be so socially distinguished, Chief. I'm going to go ahead and applaud you. Congratulations. First of all, I just want to say, welcome, everybody. And this is actually an honor community greeting. I've known Nelson for a very, very long time. Jack, Brian, and Russ, of course, Cynthia, and their wives and their kids. They've been here for years and years and years, and their services, Thomas, is unprecedented. For all you've done for East Farms community, thank you. So the proclamation goes, whereas Russ Nelson has served at Town Farm as a firefighter for 33 years at East Farms Volunteer Fire Department beginning his service July 21st, 1987, and whereas Russ Nelson has held numerous social and line officer positions for the East Farms Volunteer Fire Department culminating in his career as Chief of the department from November 2004 through October 2020, and whereas Russ Nelson has continued to enhance the fire service with the state of Connecticut through his position as a regional county coordinator of Harker County and task force team leader for Task Force 54 under the statewide fire service disaster response plan, and whereas Russ Nelson continues to be a leader of his organizations within the fire service to include the Capital Region Fire Chiefs Association, where he was appointed as vice president on July 1st, 2015, whereas Russ Nelson has been a part of countless public safety events, life-saving incidents, critical fire department decisions, civic and community activities as well as the key behind the theme personnel and administrative decisions, and whereas Russ Nelson is the leader of the Town Farming Department has made the measurable contributions to the Town Farmington in its resident special fundraisers for regional firm buildings to enhance firefighter training, servicing numerous apparatus committees to ensure this department has the safest and most efficient equipment, and maintaining cherished special events such as the annual Easter lover sale, and whereas Russ Nelson has always maintained a focus on public good and active for a tactic of public interest while building countless hours of time, energy, and personal commitment to better our community to rationalize the residents of the Town Farmington. Now therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Russ Nelson for his excellent work on behalf of the community, we congratulate him as long years of dedicated service and leadership as Chief to East Farms and Volunteer Fire Department. The Town Farmington Council hereby proclaim November 10th, 2020, as Russ Nelson Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Date of Farmington, Connecticut, the 10th day of November, 2020. C.J. Thomas, Town Council Chair. You got one more thing? A hat? Get a hat. Just want a hat to do traditional and a special card. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all your service.
Would you like to add your words?
Just over the air, the Chief of the Department, I want to say thank you to the Farmington Town Council for your support of the volunteer fire service here in the Town Farmington. It's been an honor and a privilege to be the Chief of the East Farms Volunteer Fire Department for the past 16 years. Thank you.
Before you go, Russ, we got one more.
There's one more. Well, I appreciate you going up there. I'd like to say a couple things. Russ started a few years before I started in the Volunteer Fire Department, and this is one of the hardest working volunteers we have in this town. The amount of commitment, time, Russ and his whole family put into this department is unbelievable. Russ has done a fabulous job. I've been on a lot of calls with him over the years, but running that operation is a full-time job, and it's a lot of hard work, and there are hundreds, if not thousands of hours he's put into that department and to this town, and I just want the community to know that besides going to calls, the position that Russ has is huge. It's huge. It's a huge responsibility, and he gave it all to the town. And I read it to him the other night, and I think he still wants to give all to the town. So thanks, Russ. I know where you're coming from. It's a lot of work. Thank you again, buddy.
Now, on behalf of our state representatives, I will read you the state commendation. The State of Connecticut General Assembly Official Citation Introduced Five Senator Gennaro De Zara, Senator Derek Slapp, Representative Pammy Exum, Representative Mike Demica. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Russ Nelson in recognition of your 33 years of dedicated service to this town of Farmington as a member of the East Farms Volunteer Fire Department. Through numerous social and line officer positions, including the past 16 years as Chief of the department, you have served with honor and distinction since 1987. The residents, businesses, and institutions of Farmington have benefited from your selfless and heroic actions in promoting safety and protecting lives and property. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this 10th day of November, 2020, at the state capitol, Harker, Connecticut, by Martin M. Mooney, President Pro Tem, Speaker of the House, Denise Merrill, Secretary of State.
Thank you, everyone. Very much appreciate your support over the years.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Smith. Enjoy.
Thank you.
We have one more proclamation of the evening. We have a proclamation in honor of Veterans Day, and I will read that. This proclamation will be presented on Veterans Day Wednesday, but we'll read today as though the public may. Proclamation. Whereas the citizens of our country are justly proud of the men and women who have fought to defend the principles of liberty and freedom on which our nation was founded, and whereas from the revolutionary era militias through today's sophisticated defense structure, American service members have defended our country in times of challenge, brought honor to the United States, and create a solid foundation for its continued security, growth, and prosperity. And whereas despite the tremendous peril and pressures of wartime, our armed forces have defended the country with conviction and courage. In admiration of the strength of our convictions, other nations have looked to America for leadership, and our allies have always been secure in the knowledge that our proud country will not allow its principles and beliefs to be compromised. And whereas the citizens of the United States will forever owe an immense debt of gratitude to our veterans for the sacrifices they have made to secure the safety of our country. And whereas, as an expression of that gratitude, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act calling for the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th each year, and in 1921, the date was originally designated as Armistice Day in remembrance of the end of World War I, and as a perpetual reminder of the blessings of peace, and by 1954, the observance widened to honor the courageous veterans of all foreign conflicts. And whereas our veterans reflect the preeminent qualities of patriotism and courage in all of us, and continue to make countless contributions to military and civilian life. In addition, many men and women from the Connecticut National Guard are serving in Iraq or Afghanistan, or are scheduled to be deployed there shortly along with many other Connecticut residents serving the United States Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby thanks the many contributions and accomplishments of all our veterans. Date of Farmington, Connecticut, this 10th day of November, 2020. C.J. Thomas, Chair, Farmington Town Council. We thank you. Our next order of business is public hearings, having none. Item E, new items, also none. We move to item F, public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, I have one.
And before we start the public comment, I will remind all listeners that we are trying to limit people to five minutes. We will remind you and stop you at five minutes. Please state your name and address before making your comment. Thank you.
Tim, you're able to speak.
Great. Tim Kelly, 62, Westview Terrace. And just say something if you can hear me, okay?
We got them.
All right, great. So over a year ago, the Town Council allocated about $1 million to the high school building committee, if my memory serves me right. I think it would be worthwhile for the council and the citizens to get a financial update on what we have sunk into the project so far. In the interest of transparency, the review should, you know, include vendor costs, obviously, meeting expenses, and then town personnel costs associated with the project to date. So I hope either in this meeting or a future one, we can hear that. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I do not see any.
Hearing no other public comments.
Oh, we did just got one. Hold on, one.
One more, just under the wire here.
Oh, the hand went down.
Don't be shy out there.
So I think we're good.
Okay, no other public comments. Then I'll go on to item G, reading of the minutes.
Thank you, Peter Masterson, this is, uh, I'm in Zoom mode. Uh, October 13th, I make a motion to approve the October 13th, 2020 regular Town Council meeting. Joe Captain Farrell, second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments?
I just need one change list on J. Toulon's remarks for International Rights Day. It should be International Human Rights Day for the record, please.
We need to move to amend that, Paul?
No, no, that's what the approval with this following correction.
Any other adjustments, changes, corrections? All right. All in favor of an approval with that amendment added? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Reading of communications and written appeals? Any? None. Moving on to report to committees, UConn Health Committee. That will be made. Gets me every time. We had no meeting, thank you. Item two, land acquisition committee.
Nothing new to report.
Item three, green apple committee. That is Chris Sagan. He is not here right now, so we'll move past that. He is also not here for the Farmington High School Building Committee meeting, so we'll get an update and we'll try to address Tim Kelly's question in our next meeting. Racial equality task force.
That's true. Yes, we have an update. So the racial equality task force met on October 21st, and the task force had a presentation from the Farmington Public School System in regards to racial equality in the public schools. So we heard from Kathy Greeter and the rest of the administration, and there was a lot of really good discussion, and I think we're actually going to have another meeting with the school system as well to keep that conversation going. The next meeting of the task force is scheduled for November 12th at 7:00 P.M., and we'll be discussing the goals and the timeline of the task force, and the task force will also be presenting our timelines of our next steps and our plan of action to the Town Council at the regular December Town Council meeting.
Any questions? Item six, Village Center, Farmers' Property Ad hoc Committee.
Well, I'll take it. Why don't we report that under new business? We'll go into this in great length. That sounds reasonable.
We'll be discussing this a little further later on. Report of the Council Chair and Liaison. This time I remember that's me. For those of you who weren't aware, this past Tuesday was Election Day. I would just like to thank the town clerk, the registrar, our voters, the town staff who worked very diligently to make this a safe election day, and really got through and did yeoman's work getting all the counting done of the numerous absentee ballots. This room looked very different last week, sectioned off with plexiglass and all our counters in here, and we had no incidents whatsoever. Everyone seemed to be very comfortable in the voting process in person as well. So again, I'd like to give an extra thanks also to all the volunteers who were there, and most importantly, to all the people who came out and voted. You know, it's Susan B. Anthony said, "Someone struggles for your right to vote, use it." Evidently, our public listened to that this year at the 100th year anniversary of the Women's Rights Act, so thank you. COVID, we'll mention a little later. The government, the governor has brought us back to a modified Phase Two, is 2.1. That is due to increased number of cases, which unfortunately continue to be increasing. We're doing well in Farmington, but the state of Connecticut is struggling, and please just remember, be as diligent as you can, continue to keep your social distance, wash your hands, wear your mask, and just use common sense wherever possible. We've been very fortunate to still have some nice weather. This weekend was tremendous. A lot of people got out on the trails. Take advantage of the outside as much as you can. These days are getting way too short. Within the town also, we'll talk about, as Peter mentioned, the Village Center and the Main Street sidewalk. We've been busily working on that. Also, we're going to mention a grant we just received from the state, which is going to create a new outdoor pavilion here at the Town Hall to allow for outdoor meetings as well as indoor meetings, something that's very appropriate for COVID. The last thing I'd like to mention is Thanksgiving. We won't be meeting before Thanksgiving, so I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. It will be very different this year, I understand. We're going to have to be acting and reacting a little differently. I think we can all hearken back to our New England roots. Maybe we can all have a nice outdoor Thanksgiving. The kids table, that could be in the neighbor's yard. Just enjoy yourselves, be safe out there for Thanksgiving. That is all I have for the Town Council Chair report. Now we'll go on to the Board of Education Liaison, which is also Chris Sagan, who is not here to lead. We will move to Economic Development Commission Liaison.
So the EDC met on October 14th. The EDC elected Bill Wattsworth as chairman and Dan Kleiman as vice chairman. The EDC also issued a positive referral to TPZ for Hayes Kaufman Farmington Associates for a special permit for health care diagnostic use on 838 Farmington Avenue. So this is that little plaza where Monarch Jewelers and Starbucks is in downtown Farmington, and basically the Monarch Jewelers there actually wants to decrease their stores footage, and so they want to decrease their footage, and the owner wants to lease this space that Monarch wants to give up to another company, Lapcore. So they issued a positive referral for that. And the EDC also issued a positive referral to TPZ for JDA Development for a special permit and site plan application at 784 Farmington Avenue. So this includes a new construction of a new building to house the Chase Bank, and the applicant worked extensively with the Architectural Design and Review Committee leading up to this meeting at EDC to refine the architectural design to fit the area. And there's also going to be a drive-through ATM that will be located towards the rear of the property behind the new building. And the next meeting is scheduled, the EDC is scheduled for November 18th at 5:30 P.M.
Thank you. Farmington Store District Commission.
Thank you, CJ. Our last meeting was held on October 20th, and we heard a number of issues. One was a motion to vet, and they granted a temporary certificate of appropriateness for an addition to a home at 17 Thompson Street as presented and is on file in the planning office. Also, the First Church of Christ Congregational, there was a hearing, an motion was made, and it was granted that First Church of Christ Congregational, a temporary certificate of appropriateness to install temporary sign frame and prayer box at 75 Main Street. That's on file in the planning office. Also, another issue was heard granting a temporary certificate of appropriateness to install a six-foot stockade fence from the corner of the garage to the house at 165 Main Street, and that's on file in the planning office. Also, 40 Colton, I was discussed, and it was granted a temporary certificate of appropriateness to replace siding on an detached garage at 40 Colton Street with hardy plank as presented and is on file in the planning office. Two more items. Was voted to grant a temporary certificate of appropriateness to install a generator at 103 Main Street, and that's on file in the planning office. On one other item, the interim town planner provided an update on the study report, and she is expecting a letter from the state soon and anticipates scheduling a public hearing for the December 15th, 2020 meeting. Our next meeting will be on November 17th, next Tuesday, at 4:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number five, how is it, Paul?
Nothing to report on.
Number six, Human Relations Committee.
Yes, thank you. The HRC will be meeting November 16th, where they'll be finalizing the presentation of the Human Rights Day at the December eighth council meeting, and also finalizing the needs assessment survey that should be going out to the community at the end of 2020. Also, the HRC was at the October 17th meeting for the Farmington Village Center project, and they are committed to all the A, E, A compliance issues. Thank you.
Number seven, library.
I don't have anything to say on that. Number eight, town planning zoning.
Yes, thank you again. Paula, you do have two pages from me for the record, please, because we're going to do it in a minute. Everybody else should have a copy of it, too, of this briefly hit, the highlights. On October 26th, TPZ approved JDA development to construct a new building, as Ed mentioned, for the Chase Manhattan Branch Bank. Also, on the 26th, at 790 Farmington Avenue, building is one and four to convert residential space. This plan calls for six one-bedroom units per building. Also, on the 26th, Metro Realty presented an informal presentation of proposed luxury multifamily residential development to be constructed at 402 Farmington Avenue. This project will propose to build 150 hiding apartments with amenities and 86 garages. On the 19th of November, JRF Management LLC with Haude Real Estate Development LLC asked for a zoning change of 24.85 acres, which is located at 1371, 1349 Farmington Avenue, adjacent lot 8218, 8237 Farmington Avenue. They are also looking to do a mixed-use development, including commercial and multifamily uses. And also, as you can see, if you've driven by Newville, Ion Bank is up and running, and again, the new bank, Collinsville, we have, and Thompson Bank, too, on board there. And that's it.
You think I just asked? Thank you, Joey. I just want the council to know, based on the report, that the TPZ is hopping right now. There's a lot of stuff going on, and we're happy to see that, but just we wanted to give a list for everyone just to be up, just seen on everything. There is quite a bit of housing proposed, and so, lots of different things, and the growth is really tremendous, and both at the EDC and at the TPZ. So it's quite busy, and just wanted this to be part of the record, and you guys to have a larger report, so you can keep up to speed. And I know it's sometimes more difficult during COVID about what's going on, but also just encourage anyone to follow the TPZ agendas and see what is going on, because it's quite extensive. Thank you.
And just to add to that, it is during the times of COVID when so many people slowed down or stopped altogether, it's great to see, all right, now it's developing, you know, moving forward throughout town. So thanks to everyone involved. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yes, the Unionville Historic District Commission met on October 22nd. The commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for 20 Elm Street. So this was a three-rail split-rail cedar fence along the northern property line there, and that will also give the property owners some privacy, because that's part of their property borders, the Unionville PDAC parking lot. And the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 P.M.
Unionville Village Improvement Association.
The, nothing new to report, thank you.
WPCA.
WPCA is currently having their meeting as we speak, and as far as I'm aware, they said everything is slowing.
Always a good thing. We always hear if it's backing up. Are there any other liaisons we should report? Seeing none, we move on to item K, the report of the town manager.
You have the report in front of you. I'll just highlight some of the items. Again, Veterans Day is tomorrow, and there'll be a short ceremony held at the Farmington Town Hall, a social distancing ceremony at 11:00 A.M. So everyone's welcome to attend that. CJ touched on the elections update, but it was, I think, a very great success. Thank you to Erica Steep Hoffman and Devin in my office, who really facilitated and helped with the registrars and with the town clerk, everyone. It was really a great team effort, and we wrote in the report, there was a couple of really nice things that did happen that showed a sense of community, people letting people go ahead of them in line, and, you know, it just was, my understanding was, it was a nice, a nice day overall, so great job on that. COVID-19 update, I just left out your place, as I, that we did send out another letter to the residents on November 6th. Unfortunately, the numbers statewide are rising, and the governor has put us back to Phase 2.1. I was on the phone with the health district today. Farmington's numbers over the last two weeks, but today seem to have gone down a little bit, but overall, the state numbers do seem to be rising. So we did send out another letter on that. Rose Ponti is working with the business owners and trying to keep them up to speed and sending out any kind of information that we do have. We did have, my understanding, somewhat of a success story with our restaurant, Toro Loco, correct? Toro Loco, that they have the igloos, and there was a situation where they had been working with the restaurant lobbyists and the statewide about they were allowed to have the igloos, and then they weren't allowed to have the igloos, and now they are allowed to have the igloos. So they're very happy about that. So that worked out well. And, oh, and then we did receive our steepa grant in the amount of $128,205, which was the maximum amount that you could apply for, and thank you to Kat, my assistant, and Russ Arnold, who put this grant together. And for this round, the governor implemented a special COVID-19 provision to support towns with expenditures related to their ongoing response to the pandemic, including for new construction, expansion, renovation, or replacement of existing facilities. So we thought one of the things that would be benefit, would be a benefit to us, not just in COVID times, but as many of you know, we have a lot of issue with community space in this Town Hall, and with COVID, it's been very, very difficult, because this room is probably the biggest, the only room that everyone's using for any type of meetings, which is very limited. But what our application was, was that we were outside, we just did our new patio when we did our parking lot, and we'll construct a pavilion on the existing patio space behind the Town Hall. The pavilion will provide a permanent outdoor meeting space that encourages social distancing, is equipped with technology necessary to conduct business, and can be used by is equipped with technology necessary to conduct business, and can be used by, used the majority of the year, whether permitting. And one of the things that I think helped us with our grant, too, is also because of the school system being in this building, too. And so they are, the administration's here and that we're hopeful that, you know, everyone, people could meet outside and, but we're more hopeful that we get a vaccine and, but then we could just use the, as a conference space, but. So great job, Kat, and to Russ Arnold. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy? And I'd just like to add on to that. Thank you to everyone involved in this steep grant because it was a challenge, basically brought up by the governor, seeing how people could be creative and evidently he liked how creative Farmington was that he signaled us out in conversation before. So a job well done and I'm looking forward to spending time in that outdoor pavilion, hopefully it's a little warmer. Moving on to appointments.
A motion to accept.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to accept the town manager's report?
I make a motion to accept the town manager's report, agenda item K.
Second? A motion second, any comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Now we're moving on to appointments.
Correct. Agenda item L1, that Doug Doe, be appointed to the Building Code Board of Appeals for the balance of a five-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2024.
Second? We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L3, that Evan Honeyman be appointed to the Farmington Historic District for the balance of a five-year term beginning December 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
Second? We have a motion in the second, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Old business? None. New business?
Agenda item N1, make a motion to approve the Farmington Village Center Parsons Property Ad-Hoc Committee basing a design plan, Phase 1, that was reviewed by the town council on September 10th, 2020 for the replacement of sidewalks on Main Street, Route 10.
Second? We have a motion in the second, Kathy.
So at the last meeting, we talked about what our, the ad hoc committee was recommending. And from there, we had a public informational meeting and on October 17th, 2020, the committee held a public informational meeting. CJ moderated the meeting outside of St. Patrick's Church parking lot with social distance guidelines in place. After a brief review of the upcoming sidewalk project, there were question and answer sessions, which were answered by CJ, Russ Arnold, and Police Chief Paul Melanson. Those questions can be found on the town website and there was approximately 30 community members and the meeting seemed well received. We did get quite a bit of compliments about the creativity of having it outside in the parking lot and it actually, we thought it was going to rain and it didn't, and it was a very nice day and people seemed to enjoy that we were able to be outside and we had a sound system there and it seemed to go well. Again, the committee is making recommendations based on BSC's report and the following considerations. Due to the current condition of the existing sidewalks, the ad hoc committee is recommending that the majority of funding be available to replace as much of the existing sidewalks as possible. The committee is recommending that new sidewalk lighting and enhancements that are included in the BSC report be included in Phase 2. The project area currently has street lighting and additional decorative lighting was included in the BSC report. The committee is recommending that the decorative lighting be included in Phase 2. And the ad hoc committee members will be here to answer any questions and the idea that we would be going out to bid this winter and it would start in the spring and summer of 2021.
Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, the meeting did go quite well, I think, again, thanks to the town staff, who did a tremendous job of setting up. We had chairs separated and alternating parking spots in their parking lots. We had a great sound system, it worked very well. Again, it was a sunny day, so beautiful setting and people had an opportunity to ask and have their questions answered. With that, we have a motion on the second, any discussion? Brian.
Thank you, CJ. Yes, I have to say that that public meeting went very well and I think that is the strength of Farmington, that we engage the community in every decision that we've released, at least in the discussion and development of how and who we want to be in this community. So with that in mind, there has been some discussion of solar lights in our second phase, which is certainly worth taking a look at. It was not something that was discussed when we had our first meeting, our first group of people looking at what we were going to do for the Village Center. We certainly didn't want to have some lighting in addition, but solar lights were not on the radar at that point, but it's certainly worth looking into. But my concern is if we're going to go out to bid, we were considering having conduit put underneath the sidewalks while we had the opportunity now, so that when we did want to do some decorative lighting later on, we could just tap into that and that would save us a lot of money down the road. Now that we're considering solar lighting, we're considering now putting in the conduit. And my concern is that, number one, this is, solar lighting is something that has not been discussed with the town at all. I mean, it's certainly a nice idea, but what makes it strong is that we do get town input on this. And so I think solar lighting is something that we really do have to discuss as a town, if it's really going to work, if it's strong enough. I mean, we haven't seen any information on the lights and so we don't know if it's strong enough. We don't know if we're going to have tree-lined streets, is there enough sunlight to actually power solar lighting? We don't know, but certainly worth taking a look at. So, and the town has not had an opportunity to really reflect on that and there were some questions about the solar lighting, which we said we're going to put off to Phase 2. But right now, we really should, at least, if we're going to get some pricing, get some estimates, find out what the price would be if you were to put the conduit in under the sidewalk, if we found that, for whatever reason, solar lighting was not really advantageous or really if we were able to do it. So I'm thinking that we should at least be requesting the price for having the conduit put in and see where we are with that, just in case. And that gives us a time to, you know, speak with town about solar lighting, get some information about solar lighting, so we know and understand how it works and if it really is going to be able to do what we were imagining it would do. And I would request that we change the charge just to include the option for having the conduit put in, so we can see where we would stand with that.
Thank you, Brian. And I want to address a couple of things, first off, because I appreciate your point. If it's something we're going to consider, it's certainly time to have the conversation now. The discussion on the solar lights, having been the chair of the Green Act Committee in the past, I have a strong feeling towards going towards solar versus other lighting and some of the thinking behind that. First of all, solar lighting nowadays, many people think of solar lighting and they think of a modern light fixture. It's not the way solar lighting has to be anymore. You can have your same historic-looking solar lights with panels that are integrated into the hood of the light, so they look just like any other historic light. One of the other important factors, and I think we discussed it, it came up at our meeting on October 17th, was the lights are not going to be in replacement of any existing lights that are on that area now. All the existing lighting will remain. So whatever lighting is put in will be added and additional to the light you have now. So it will be bonus, really. But good question, Brian, I think we look into it, there's no, I don't think there's any harm and I think Kathy may have some numbers on it, but certainly no harm in putting that in as finding out what the cost is, because one of the things we discussed on our ad hoc committee was our goal being getting as much linear footage in sidewalk as we can, so we can go out as far as possible and gives us a substantial reduction to try and put in the conduit and it's not necessarily adding anything to it, so we have to discuss that, but that's a good point. Kathy, you might have some numbers there?
Yeah, no, I think that there's probably no harm in putting an ad alternate out just to see what it would cost to do it, because, I mean, that's, you're not going to do it again. So I think if we have the price, that would be beneficial to us. I just, Russ and I talked about it a little bit today and, you know, you're probably talking about, you know, between $300,000 and $500,000. That's what he said. So again, we don't know what it would be when we go out, but I don't think there's any harm of putting an ad alt in there and then the committee, you guys, the council, can decide if that's something we want to do.
Just one other, to follow up on one other point, I also think that if we're going to make that kind of a change to this, we should be talking, you know, to the town, maybe get together with the old committee to at least get some input on that. And, by the way, I do support solar lighting, I am all for that, but we just want, I think we should be discussing it as a town and make sure that is the right thing for us. That's all.
Fair enough.
One question, Kathy, and I'm not holding you arrested at figure, but that's just for installing the utilities, the conduit, the wiring, the junction boxes, and that doesn't include fixtures or anything like that, right?
Yeah, correct.
So it's just the mechanics of the whole thing, the electrical aspect, not the fixtures or anything like that?
Right, and then that still be part of Phase 1, just getting the stuff.
Right, and so we're looking at right now to just have a electrical contractor quote the installation of the wiring, junction boxes, or whatever other properties to make the lights work.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So Kathy, the numbers you said, I'm sorry, for the price of the conduit, just rough of estimate?
We're saying, I would say like 300, 350,000.
Okay. And what roughly are we estimating per foot, the cost of the sidewalk to be?
We're saying $30 per foot.
Okay, so the 300 would be roughly 10,000 feet, linear feet?
Yeah, which is two miles of sidewalks.
That'd be the whole, just about the whole thing.
Yeah, which, yeah, that's what you put the, you put it all underneath the whole thing. Yeah. And then we'd have to obviously later be vetted, too, to Brian's point about, you know, where would we be putting the lights from the start to the end, just in the village? You know, where would they go, that type of thing.
Yeah, all that impacts the estimate, absolutely.
Are we making amendment to the motion or?
Brian has proposed making amendment to the motion, I believe, if I can paraphrase this, to add an ad-ol item for conduit.
Correct.
All such as that?
Amendment?
Okay. We have a motion in the second, any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
opposed? Amendment passed unanimously. We also have a motion and a second, I believe, on the floor. For the original motion, do we have any further discussion on the original one? Seeing none. We have a motion in the second with amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. N2.
Agenda item N2, that a contract for the acquisition of four Dell computer servers at a cost of $19,890 each, for a total of $79,560, be awarded to Dell Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas.
Second? We have a motion in the second, Kathy.
In our 2021 capital improvement budget, funds were included to replace the computer servers used at the Farmington Sleep Department. These servers are approaching the end of their useful life and have recently begun to experience problems due to a water leak in server room. The purchases of this server would be under the National Association of State Prepariment Officers and the reason why it's at the council level is because it's over $50,000.
One question I have, has the lease been, leased in this?
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
Good question. Kathy, we have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N3, to award a contract for the purchase of treated road salt for 2020, 2021 winter season to Cargill, Inc. of Boston, Mass. at purchase price of $61 per ton.
Second? We have a motion in the second, Kathy.
The purpose of this motion is to contract with a vendor to supply treated road salt, which will be used by the Highway and Grounds Division on the snow and ice-covered roads and sidewalks during the upcoming season. Cargill submitted the lowest price of $61 per ton. It's estimated that the town will use 2,000 tons during the upcoming winter season, bringing the value of this award to $122,000. There are funds in the Highway and Grounds operating budget for this purpose and this contract was awarded under the Capital Legion Purchasing Cooperative End.
We have a motion in the second, any questions? Nobody's going to ask what we're going to do with all this salt when we have such an incredibly mild winter that we don't need?
Just go.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. N4.
Agenda item N4, that the town acquired 28 new lithium-ion battery-powered golf carts from Club Car LLC of Evans, Georgia, for West Woods Golf Course, and that the town manager and town treasurer be authorized to enter into a lease financing arrangement with Delage Laden Public Finance LLC of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, for the leasing financing of the 28 golf carts.
Second? We have a motion in the second, Kathy.
Since 2011, the town has been using golf carts supplied by Club Car LLC of West Woods Golf Carts. The carts were supplied in a five-year lease financing contract, which were paid from the proceeds of the cart rentals to the golfers. The last latest five-year contractual agreement ends at the end of the 2020 golf season in November and Club Car has submitted to the town to supply the 28 new golf carts. It's been working for us, using, doing this lease purchase and it would be paid over five years at $21,599 per year through a leasing contract. The town would have the option at the end of the contract to either buy new carts outright or returning them. The contract would be in form of a government lease purchase agreement, which has the advantage of being tax-exempt, thereby granting the town a lower interest rate. We undertook similar arrangements in 2011 and 2016 and it was successful for the golf course. As has been the practice, the cost of the acquisition and the financing of the carts will be paid from the proceeds of the cart rentals to golfers.
Any questions? We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N5, to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below.
Second? We have a motion in the second, any discussion on the property tax refunds? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. At the executive session, we have none, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, Joseph.
One thing, just want to wish Marine Corps birthday, 245 years. Thank you to all of our Marines out there, former and current. Thank you for your service to our country. God bless.
Okay, before we go, our quote for the night is from our own local Mark Twain. Wisdom is what you get from a lifetime of listening when you would rather be taught. With that, I'll ask our motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the November 10th, 2020 Town Council meeting.
Second? Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned.